At five thirty-two. And my first order of business will be... The minutes. Last month. Some months ago today. I reviewed them last week. I thought they were all right.
I don't see anything to be changed. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented from the February fourth... Fourteenth meeting, excuse me.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I have to vote. Okay. Dan?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. What do you want me, over here?
Between me and Christine. I'm just kidding. We just did the minutes. Without you. Well then, we have advertised the hearing for chapter... The revision of chapter thirteen, which is the Caribou zoning code. And I opened that hearing at five thirty-four. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to us about the zoning revisions?
Myself, I guess so, good. Do I look there?
You do, and you let us know who got it.
Hi there. My name is Sonya Godin. I will be, um, I'm attempting to open that reopen Serena Beauty Spa here in Caribou. I had it... I had my own salon here in Caribou from two thousand and five to two thousand and sixteen. And then I relocated downstate. And I'm trying to come back here in Caribou. My father, right there, the handsome man, is, uh, Gylle Slavak. He will be owning the piece of property. Pardon?
This is a hearing on the zoning revision. Are you speaking to the zoning revision? Is your application...
I don't know. I guess I see that I'm... I thought about the, because of the zoning of the property, that was the big issue.
The zoning of your property's not an issue.
Well, now I'm really embarrassed.
That's all right. That's all right. I write embarrassing emails all the time.
That's enthusiasm, that's not a bad thing.
Thank you.
It's a life for a doctor.
I love being embarrassed.
We're gonna get to yours, I promise.
I'm glad somebody finally was like... Oh my god.
Anyone else wish to... I know, yes. Uh, Christine has, uh, recused herself from this hearing and wished us to speak as a landlord.
Yes, thank you for getting here, Dan. So we have a quorum. Okay, my name is Christine Solomon, um, and I have just noticed today, um, that our zoning, uh, proposal, uh, on... I think it's tax map forty-one, but it's the... Between the hospital and Griffith Ford, um, the zoning, it looks like is being changed to an R-three. Do you see that parcel there? And it previously was along Route, Route one, uh, commercial. And then it kind of borders toward the back, towards the industrial park. Uh, a commercial, there's a swath of commercial there, and then there was R-two. So I guess my first question being, what was the reasoning behind this change? If anybody can recall.
I have to be frank with you. I don't know.
Well, I think, what I remember, and it's been a while since we've been doing this.
Yeah.
From what I remember is that there was a lot of spots in the map that were all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
There was C-one, and then C-twos, and then R-twos, and then R-threes. We were trying to clean it up.
Mm-hmm.
And that one there, I think is just because it's on the outskirts.
Right.
We made it an R-three.
Yeah. So that's in the outskirts?
Well, it's on the map. It, I mean, we're trying to get consistent.
Yeah.
With our zoning.
Okay. So, why wouldn't you put it...
We're trying to open it up.
But, right, but between a hospital district and another large commercial district, why would you put it residential and not commercial?
I think we're judging the book by its cover.
Yeah.
Honestly.
You just...
Given the layout, the amount of water, something.
It's just a... Yeah, I was just surprised by it.
I mean, the fact that it would be an R-three, you could still do pretty much whatever you wanted, and it could always be...
And I think you're right. I just, I just wanted to know what was going on there, and then if there's something that does happen to go on there, how, you know, how easily is it gonna get changed back? Probably, probably fairly easily. Depending on what comes up.
Commercial, I mean.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
Honestly, I have a strong feeling, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not opposed to knocking it back and keeping it as commercial. I...
So, so the last official zoning map had it as a commercial, C-two.
Right.
And, and there were, uh, thinking back years and years ago, I'm kind of late to this process, and we've been, this has been ongoing, I've been here for a year. But, um, there, there were projects proposed for that area that would have been consistent with a C-two.
And I'm fine with making that as a C-two.
Yeah. And I mean, like you said, the sewer goes through there, and that's kind of what that C-two zone, you know, follows a little bit, but, you know, I don't... I'm just not sure. I'm kind of surprised by it, by the change, and I just, I'm not sure if I want to change that at this point in time, or... I haven't had time to think about it, I guess is my...
Any impacts?
So...
Any impacts that you can think of, maybe negative to this change?
Well, you know, it's a pretty big piece of land, and I'm just worried, like, uh, there might be access, if it's changed, getting access to the rear of that property, um... You know, that frontage along Route one is, I think, a commercial, you know, the other side of it, you know, I think is a, lends itself to commercial, development across the street is, you know, commercial, so...
Very interesting. Christine, if, if, I just took a look at the small map.
Mm-hmm.
The small map has it Zone C-two.
It does?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe it didn't get colored, maybe it didn't get colored in right.
That would be, that would be on me.
So, maybe there is a change, or maybe there is not a change?
The small map still shows it the same color as an R-three.
Oh, 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 no, my mistake.
Okay.
The H-one is over the blue.
Yeah.
And, no, it's, it's, it's the same on the small map. Um, the remedy, in my own mind, is to entertain a motion to not make that change at, on that parcel at this time.
I'll make that motion, that we don't change that parcel.
Okay.
Two and R-three.
Okay.
Keep it as a C-two.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Three, four. Sorry.
Okay. Motion carries. We'll propose it to City Council as remaining C-two. Any further discussion from anyone? About this rather massive change? And the change to the map? We want to present the changes to the wording and the changes to the map to City Council at the same time, because they're gonna have to have another hearing before it becomes law.
And, and so just for the audience, this has been an ongoing effort for several years now. Unfortunately, we're trying to revise a, a document that's a living document, so it's in constant revision as it is. And it's been through, um, three city managers and, and, uh, two or three code enforcement officers and, and...
Two assistant managers.
Two assistant managers.
About four plenty, Board Chairman.
So it's time to pull the trigger, anyway.
Yeah. Um, but, but everyone should be advised that we already know a section of it having to do with, with shoreline zoning is ripe for revision already. But we don't want to remove it from the document. It's part of the document. With the philosophy that is a living document, we think we'll propose it to City Council, knowing full well that we'll be back at them sometime later with another chunky revision for the, for the shoreline zoning. We have to bring that piece into compliance with new state regulations. Have I made myself abundantly muddy?
I think so.
I see no further comments, so I'll close the hearing at, uh, five forty-two. And open for discussion amongst the board, if anyone has anything they want further to talk about.
I'll make the motion that we present it to the council, um, as is with the change to that piece of property and with everything else intact.
Second. We moved in second to send this to City Council. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor? unanimous. Thank you very much. At least we're making some progress. Okay. Did that take care of four and five? Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. CEO? Did that just take care of...
Uh, that took care of Sec, Section Three, the public hearing, in fact, and we, we acted. I didn't actually get that in the agenda, but that was proper. So we're, now we're on to new business in Sec, in number four.
Four is just, four is the hearing we just had. Four is your new business. I'm looking at...
We need four A.
Oh, I'm looking at the list of items instead of the agenda. Hello? It's been a long day. Okay. Now we come to something that a lot of people are here for, which is the home occupation application for Sonya Godin. Now is your...
So, so this application has come back. Uh, we, we, we thought before that it wasn't a really complete application at the last time we entered, we considered it. Um, so we've been working with Miss, uh, Miss Godin to, um, to perfect the application. I believe it's complete. And I think that Sonya would like to have a few words, if, if you would like to hear from her regarding your business.
Do you guys want to hear everything all over again? Well, anyways, I think everybody kind of gathers, um, why I'm here, trying to open up a salon. It's to be located, pretty much the building is a duplex, so one, one area will be my living area. The other half is gonna be the beauty salon. It has its own private entrance. Um, there's gonna be a room, it is a separate waiting area, reception area where the entrance is. Um, separate room to do hair. There's gonna be a specific room with two manicure tables, two pedicure tables. There's another room that is gonna have, um, to be for facials, electrolysis, kind of, pretty much a massage bed. And then the other room of the shop is gonna be a brand-new tanning bed that I have.
Very good. And so that's eleven Summer Street?
Eleven Summer Street.
So what part, what portion of the, uh, building will be used for the business? Square feet versus how many square feet of the entire?
That's the portion, uh, the, the front part of the house, yeah. When you go on Summer Street.
Do you have a square footage?
That's the front part, so it'd be the, the, the entry there for the salon.
Yeah. Do you have a square footage?
I'm unaware. I don't know if it's...
Square footage, okay, if I work around it, it must be, uh, okay. Okay, let's forget the outside, or someone, it must be around eight hundred square feet. Eight, eight two, there's other room, there's other room, right there right now, there's a bedroom, there's a, there's a bedroom, and, uh, there's a hallway, and, uh, there's a bathroom.
Do you have any diagrams or floor plans showing, showing where the shop is?
Uh, it's not particularly, it isn't where the shop is.
Just because it has to be fifty percent of the, it has to be fifty percent.
Or less.
Or less of the total floor area of the structure. So that's what, kind of what we want to...
That portion there is exactly half, because it has an upstairs too, so...
But the upstairs are gonna be two private bedrooms. One is gonna be for my daughter, and actually, we're keeping one of the rooms for my parents.
So half of the lower level?
Yes.
So...
Yeah, you'd be good then.
So, so if you, if you look into your packet, there's actually a tax card in there that has a diagram of the building?
Yeah.
And you can see, I think, on, on the, um, would be the south side of the building, the long room. Is, is that correct?
The what?
Is it, is it, is your business gonna be on the street side and the rest is on the back side?
On the street side.
It's not indicated anywhere, so I just want to make sure that we're under fifty percent.
Double that.
Of course, the salon has its own private restroom, you know?
Right.
For the clients.
And that's the first floor, doesn't show the second floor, so... Okay.
Two stories.
No, it's not quite. It's gotta be usable square footage.
So that, okay, when you're looking at this picture, uh, from the, from the street, that, that door right on the left is going to be your entrance?
For our salon, yes.
Okay.
And where the garage is, that's gonna be our own entrance there.
Okay.
Plus, we have a, a ramp for handicap people there.
Yeah.
Be able to go in to get all this...
Is that ramp on the front side or on the back side?
On the back side. In, in the garage.
So are they gonna have to go through the house in order to get to there using the ramp?
Yes, and the door, the two, it's a kitchen, which is a plenty, uh, space for, uh, chairs.
How many people are gonna be working at all these different manicure, pedicure, and all that?
Three, me, myself, and I.
Really?
Yes, I've done it before, and that's the way I like to work. I've had my experience downstate dealing with employees, and it's not my thing, to put it mildly. And labor laws have changed and things like that, so didn't make it very easy for this business.
You can have one, sorry.
No, go ahead.
You can have one person getting a pedicure and another person getting a manicure, and you can...
I've done that plenty. I can have, uh, sometimes mother-daughters like to come in, so having two pedicure chairs, they get into, enjoy that together. Friends, couples.
Right.
So also included in the packet was the, um, purchase and sales agreement, or actually the, um, the deed from the house.
So we have that, and I see that is in Mr. Lebec's name, the purchase and sale agreement. And so, but you're the applicant, so do you have a leasing agreement with Mr. Lebec for this?
Yeah, I have to...
For a resident.
I have to eventually repay him.
Are you?
I have to eventually repay him. I will be paying him monthly. That's how I opened up my other salon here in Caribou. He helped me out, because I'm that great of a kid, and, uh...
In order to have a home occupancy, uh, business, you have to have a personal interest in that property, so you need to have a leasing agreement with the landlord for that residency.
Okay, because, because I'm the father, but will she be gonna have the lease?
Mm-hmm. You will own, you will own the building.
I will own the building, yes.
Right, and she will lease space from you.
Yes.
And so I'm saying that you need that paperwork showing that residency.
Okay.
For Sonya.
We, we did have that conversation, and Ms. Godin was, was, uh, was okay with that.
Easy enough to do.
If we do that. Drop it quickly.
So you have the paper trail there.
And so now, where are you proposing that the people park for your clients?
Uh, I really haven't figured that out yet. There's a lot of parking there, there's no doubt. Um, and we have a two-car garage, so most of the time my vehicle will be right in the garage.
Right.
There is off-street parking directly where the, where the door, the entry door is?
Is that, in this picture, is this area here all your parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in the front, in the front of the building, yeah, the school parking area. It's gonna be the entry there for our salon.
Yeah.
I have the same question.
There's about ten of them all together.
Yeah. Yeah, there's plenty of space there, it's just, I just wonder if you have a designated spot there yet. I'm sure it will be fine.
Do you plan on erecting any signs?
Just one.
I'm, I'm gonna have her sign, uh, right against the wall, yeah, in the front, all the building there.
Yes.
Uh, uh, she has a sign, but whatever.
That'll face Summer Street.
I'm going, put it right against the wall, with bolts, whatever.
Facing Summer?
It's not gonna be hanging out.
Okay. But that's facing Summer.
Yes, it is facing Summer.
Okay, thank you. It can only be...
Size of the sign.
You're aware of the size restrictions on the sign, right?
I'm not aware, but I can tell you that it's not nearly as big as the one that I had previously in Caribou.
Quite small, yeah.
We'll make sure she knows. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, well, before they go, have you may have the sign made already?
She has one made already.
Yes.
Change the copy numbers on it. The number of the building, the phone number, and...
Yeah, so...
We'll make sure they, they have the specifications. Yep.
I actually believe I still have a copy of the design in my, um, email mailbox, so I can even email that to you.
Sure.
If you'd like to have that.
Well, then, can, is the board willing to just move down this seven-item checklist on page four of the application?
I'm ready.
Home occupation shall only employ residents of dwelling unit. She's had to work.
Oh, trust me. Dad does things for me before I even have to ask.
Page four of the application.
That's in the application. Thank you.
There's a set of conditions right there. Home occupation carried on entirely within the principal or accessory structure. I don't see that as a problem. Not occupy more than fifty percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling. No one allowed on any floor other than the first floor unless there are sprinklers. So, nobody goes upstairs?
Well, yeah, no.
Noise, vibration, smoke, dust, the usual shopping list, uh, of things, uh, are not permitted. No on-street parking, that I don't believe is an issue. And ingress, egress meet Life Safety Code one-oh-one and ADA, and you told us that there's a ramp and an ADA went to the door.
Right, there's a, there's a big ramp there for handicap, if you want to get in and...
And then there's a second door.
Is the ramp to ADA specs, though?
Pardon?
Is the ramp to ADA specs?
Uh, American disability, yeah.
One inch of rise per, one foot of...
Is there only one inch of increase on the floor?
No, it's, it's not steep, because it's, the range is from here to, uh, to the table there, so it's, it's a small, it's just a small slope.
Yeah. I do, I do believe by regulation that accommodations can be made as well, so she could actually go to, go to people.
Is she gonna...
We've discussed this in, actually, the last, um, home occupation that we discussed. It was the same conversation, and you can, you can make accommodations to allow for, uh, you can go to them, basically.
I propose it one condition of approval, and that is presentation of a lease agreement.
Right, and the sign as well?
I'll, I'll let Ken judge the sign. Any other conditions anyone want to talk about?
Is there anybody here?
Yeah.
Who else?
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the issue?
We're here to support her.
Lots of moral support.
Now, when this appears on the agenda, are all the abutting properties, um, owners, are they notified to be able to come and be part of this?
Yeah, they were notified prior to the last meeting as well.
We, we, we've held a public hearing, yes.
Pardon?
We held a public hearing at the...
We had a hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, everyone within five hundred feet.
Just follow, because the application is incomplete.
Yeah, and we actually have the mailing list.
I can't think of anything else, man.
Well then, the chair will entertain a motion.
Someone?
Would the, would the lease agreement have...
The lease agreement and the sign, which Ken is gonna discuss anyway, so...
All right. Three, four, today's pie day. All in favor of the motion?
Hasn't been seconded.
Hasn't been seconded.
I know, I will second that motion.
Thank you. Now all in favor?
We have announced...
Do you have the original documentation that I should sign before we go away tonight?
If you're okay with letting me handle the conditions.
Sure, I am. In fact, I will write them in.
And as for the lease, I just bring that to you?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, you can email it if you like.
You can have your script written, too.
Well, good. Good job, and good luck.
Thank you much. I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming this evening, everybody.
Hope you all have success.
Thank you, guys. I'll see you forever.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pass this one for, oops. Get bigger paper clips.
Oops. That goes to overhead.
Yeah.
If you want to start with them down there, I'll just put it with my hands.
Okay. I'll, I'll keep the top sheet so we don't get a mess. If we could have you folks all sign that.
Did you close the public hearing on that one?
What's that?
Did he close the public hearing?
I did open the public hearing.
Yeah.
The hearing was earlier, prior meeting.
Okay.
Now, the next item. There you go, sir.
Check.
Is... The use permit for Darrell Richardson, Darrell, excuse me, Richardson.
Yes. This, also world business, um, we, we had, um, action from the board at the last meeting that, um, we would check to see if, if we should, uh, have the fire marshal look at this establishment. It turns out that the amount of square footage doesn't, uh, doesn't, doesn't, uh, call for the fire marshal to visit. Our, our building officials have been there to the site, and I've been there myself personally, and find no issues.
Any conditions we need to add to it? In your opinion?
No. I, I can't think of a one. So I do have the document here.
I thought the communication we received from you stated that something needed to be looked at. If I remember correctly.
Yeah, for, we needed to just...
No, that, that the city could, could inspect, but the city's already been there.
Well, I think my motion was that if it was all set, just to prove it, and, and I think that's how I said in the motion, if it, if you didn't need any fire marshal there, then he was good.
Yeah.
So we should, I should...
I didn't think we even had to talk about this today, if we didn't have a fire marshal.
So it was approved, basically, conditionally, and...
Approved last time, and the condition that you settled those other questions, they've been settled, uh, we will sign it.
Can you remind me first, can you remind me, is this shop going to be separated completely from the other part of the business? I thought I heard you say that.
It's in a different room.
It's in a different room.
It will have, it will have different access.
Different access, but everything is walled off?
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to, you can't get it from...
In the way that the operation works, there, there's actually another part of the business. I hate to say business, because it's not retail. It's a medical marijuana establishment. Um, the next building over is actually a cultivation and operation to support that activity. So it's, it's segmented.
Yeah, but within the shop, within the building that the proposed shop is gonna be located, is it walled off?
Yes.
And completely isolated from the caregiving part of the building?
Yes.
With its own entrance?
Yeah.
Okay. Is he adding a new sign? Or, or adding something to the sign that he's got there?
Not to my knowledge.
I don't think I've seen anything out there.
I don't know if he has a sign.
Yeah, he does.
There's a big sign.
He has a new sign, organic, or whatever.
I'm thinking. What do you have on? We're down to item C, which is second design review for Caribou Senior Living LLC. Which we all know is the old hilltop school.
And we do have representatives here from, from the developers?
Yes, for you, sir.
I don't know if we're going to get that on TV, but we'll kind of set that up there. Should we set up to? The screen.
So this is Rick Guttudi from Guttudi Thompson Architects. And he's working closely with the Caribou Senior Living LLC.
Okay, that's how we did it before. All right, so I gotta stand, how am I gonna, how are we gonna do this?
Um.
You set it up, I'll do the talking.
I think our viewing audience is gonna have to take second place to our planning board. I don't know if the viewing audience can even find out what channel we're on.
So sit on the website. Most important fire bump this planning board meeting for me is after forty years, this is my last one.
Oh, what do you care, after forty years?
Congratulations.
Oh, wow.
A day will come when I'll say that, too.
Ben will pick up the panel.
After forty years, that's good.
Unless you make me come back.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. Uh, so, I'm gonna do the same thing I did the last time, which is just give you a brief description of the site and a little bit of the pictures of the building. We know a little bit more about what we're doing now. But basically, Marshall Avenue, there's the baseball field. This is adjoining neighborhood. Everybody know who we are?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, okay. So, here is the existing building, that was the existing entrance, main entrance of the school, this is the gymnasium, these are the two classroom rings. There's an existing driveway that comes off of Marshall Avenue, comes in to the existing parking lot here. And it comes around and connects, actually, there's a little triangle right here, it actually connects back through and heads back out to Marshall Avenue. So, what I want to describe is what we're doing and what is already here. So the parking area, the, the street, the parking stays the same. This street or roadway is the same up to here. We're going to take out, it's, it's all asphalt along the front of the building here, and what we're gonna do is take some of it out so that we have some green space and walking space along the front of the building because the, and the units along that side are gonna have exterior doors out to the, up the sidewalk, so we want a little green space there. And we're gonna create parking spaces all along the front within the existing asphalt area. We're taking out that little section of asphalt that makes that triangular connection. Ready with that? And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a, a, a small roadway that comes back along the backside of the building here. And it's primarily just to provide access to the unit, so when people move in and move out, they can go in the back door and bring their furniture in and out that way. And also it provides secondary means a third, actually, third line of fire access to the building. So what we're adding is a turnaround right here that is gonna come in under a new port cochere. And the entrance to the building will be into what is now the kitchen of the building, and I'll describe that a little bit more carefully as we go on. There'll be a, they'll need a walkway that comes into the parking area, there'll be a walkway that comes into a redone facade of the gym. This will stay the same. The, the access in and out of the building will be into the gym here, in the main building, all the tenants and guests and residents will come in through here and then they'll come down through quarters into the building. What we intend to do for utilities is, this is the existing sewer line, it's gonna stay where it is. There's an existing overhead power line that comes in to a pole here and a second pole here. And take those two poles out, we're gonna put a new pole in here, we're gonna drop down and go underground to the, up to approximately this location to a transformer bed that'll then come into the building at this point. We don't have any, any other real, in the, in the future, we'll probably have a small propane tank for, for, for cooking. We don't really have the kitchen plan yet, so we don't know how big that is. It'll probably be below grade, so you won't see it. We will, at this point, we have a sprinkler line that comes into the building. We're assuming that, well, we've had it tested, the sprinkler line is gonna be large enough, so we don't have to dig it up. We'll be able to use the existing sprinkler line that comes in, comes into the building approximately here. And we'll probably have to split it up out here someplace, but I don't think that's gonna affect anything along the site. There is an existing, there is roof water, there's a flat roof, so there are roof drains that come down both quarters and they connect to a line. And I can't really tell exactly where it goes and exactly what it is, but it's, there's a dry well back here that catches all the rainwater, so it doesn't go into the sewer line. So it's separate. And we plan on maintaining that. So, we are increasing the number of parking spaces, but we are not increasing the amount of asphalt or decreasing the amount of asphalt. This will be gravel. This will be new, so I think we have, there's fifty-seven here and there's twenty-one there, so it's fifty-seven, twenty-one is ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety, somewhere in there. Uh, fifty-seven, sixty-seven, seventy-seven, approximately seventy-seven spaces, and we have thirty-eight units, so we have two plus.
How many staff?
Uh, there'll be one staff. Regular, full-time staff, I guess, I believe that's right. We have some office area here, that's part of it, not sure really what that is at this point. But I think where, in my world, I do a lot of elderly housing, it's usually about three-quarters of a car per person, per unit. You know, it's not one car per unit. So I think we're, we have more than enough parking existing.
So when you're planning it, you, you'll call for the appropriate amount of handicap and van access parking spot?
Yeah, there'll be one van access and there'll be two handicaps access. And this, next week after today, if you make this my last trip to a planning board, this, the whole package will be sent to the state fire marshal's office for both, for fire permit and also for ADA accessibility. That's the whole thing.
I have a question, where's the sewer line on that property?
The existing, the sewer line?
The existing.
It comes right out, are you familiar with the school, it comes right out, that corner classroom right here?
Yes.
It comes right out of there and goes right straight across to, to the line on the street. Yeah, and we don't have to.
So there's no chance of that stormwater go, from the roof going to the sewer line, you know that it goes out to that dry well?
Yep, the, the lines, the, the roof drains are like right here, and they drop down and we've located all the lines in the building. And they go down underneath the slab in the quarter, and they connect down through here, and you can actually, actually it's dug up right now, you can see the stormwater line, it's right here.
Okay.
So it looks like it comes, I've shown it coming out here, which is what is shown on the original plans, but I think actually what it is, it comes out and does that. But it's, I guess, the point you're trying to make is.
But it is isolated.
It's totally separate.
Okay.
Doesn't go into the sanitary.
Okay, good.
That space between the cross drive and Marshall Ave, is that part of your property?
This?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The entire part, this is the parcel.
So there's no easement issues, all right.
Yep.
Do you anticipate any capacity issues with your sewer line running out to the, to the road?
No. It's a.
Do you know how big it is?
Yep, it's a seven inch.
And that's enough to service thirty-eight individual apartments all flushing at the same time?
Yep, we have a mechanical engineer who, who, who designed all of the new system within the building. And we have a new collector line that comes down here, it's five inches, and we're going in with a seven inch line.
Don't most, most of those classrooms have toilets anywhere?
Yeah.
I think they all had toilets in there anyway.
Yep, they have specific gallons per minute, per unit, per type of unit it is. If he says that's, if he says there's enough, there's enough. I'm not gonna tell you myself, but I'll tell you, he will tell you that. So yes.
Don't forget, it was an elementary school, considered under twenty-five kids all flushing at the same time.
Right, yeah.
Are there other large apartment complexes in our town that are, are probably, I don't think that there's any?
And we're replacing all of the, all of the line, there, there were lines underneath them, we took those all out, replaced them, and they were all sized based on the needs of the building, the thirty-eight units. And when we got down here, what connected was a five inch line.
Are they actually less capacity with apartments?
Have you guys had a conversation with Gary about parking for the ball fields? You have, you've addressed that, 'cause I know some nights it gets pretty full, a lot of cars up there.
With this type of housing, I don't anticipate many tenants having cars. It's just not similar, housing is actually people that are, can no longer live independently.
Well, that's why I asked about staff. If you have people who are living there and they can't live independently, is there not going to be staff taking care of them?
Part of that, it hasn't been discussed, is part of, there's a Rousak Home Health's operation will be in there. So they'll be independent, they'll be a tenant of ours, but their entire staff will be there.
So you do need staff parking?
You would have staff parking, but if you take that three-quarter per unit rule, thirty-eight units, three-quarters of that is approximately started, and I don't have this. So it'd be down to three-quarters of thirty-eight.
Okay.
And we've got seventy-seven spaces, so I think we've got a cover.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if there's someone in the, right, being careful, yeah, okay.
Back to the previous question, so the ball fields parking is where on these?
They, they share.
They share a big.
They share that big area.
Yeah.
Well, that and the lawn, they park.
They can go on that back lawn there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see an issue, because, I mean, there was, I mean, I've been to ball fields, but there when they were having a function, let's say at the school, like, and it's.
Well, if there is.
It's no, it's no different than what it was before, I don't think so.
So does, does the LLC now own just what's pictured, colored here, and the ball fields are still retained by the city?
Correct, yes, yes.
And you'll have some kind of an agreement, I guess, with the city to allow them to park on your law?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a, he's been in place now, when the sale took place.
That was a condition?
Yes, it's, it's in there, they have it right from the street, right up, right up the whole side.
And, and actually, if you, if you were, that the required width for access into here would be about half that width, so there'll be.
You guys are widening up that existing road, that's what's staying, it's because of Jones.
Plenty of opportunity to park all along here, all the way around.
Yeah, there's plenty of space. Plenty of parking. For an hour and a half, for a long game.
Yeah, well, they got it in the field, so, they got three fields.
Right.
They're gonna have more parking.
In the playground.
Yeah, so. You got three games going on, six teams.
Oh. So there's more than one field.
Yeah, there's.
There's three, there's, there's gonna be three fields this summer, so.
I, I, I think they'll be.
Yeah, I think so too, I just.
Gary actually planned on building a.
In, in the grassy field there, okay. Yeah.
Are you doing anything about exterior lighting?
Uh, yep, I've located, we're gonna have lighting underneath the port cochere. There'll be lights at each of the entrance ways. There, there, and then what we're gonna do is we're gonna have low cutoff pole lights, one, two, three, four, bar.
Will that provide ample lighting for those units that have exterior entrances?
Yes, there's, they'll be, you mean like right here?
Yeah.
They'll be, they'll have their own, they'll have their own, there's a light in underneath, there's a cover over each of the entryways, and there'll be recessed light underneath. I got two more pictures to show, if you want to see them.
Carry on.
You seen enough of this one?
It's very nickel.
Yeah.
Should be getting pretty good at it, it's my second whack-up. So, this, I just thought I would, this is just the overall plan, and I just thought I'd just give you the five-minute tour of it. It's, uh, isn't really a requirement of the planning board, I guess, but I'll, I'll do it anyway. So what we're, as I said, this is the gym portion, here was the old entrance way. So right here is where that turnaround is, those, that dark line right there. So that shaded area right there is the port cochere. You're gonna enter right here, which is right through the hood, the cooking hood. And it's been a bone of contention amongst the party.
I didn't get into that one.
But, yeah, so there's, so that, that whole space right along here is gonna get divided into two. And part of it's gonna be, is a kitchen area. And this, this area right here is all entrance-related stuff. Vestibule with an air, with a locking, a locking vestibule with intercom, security, and a whole nine yards. There'll be a office here for the staff person. There's a, a bathroom and a, and a, and a space here for, it is, it's not really defined yet, but for maybe a healthcare provider, telemed opportunity for the residents, but it hasn't been really defined yet, but we created a space.
Do you want to have a mailroom?
Yep, well, we have, we have mailboxes right on the backside of this wall. There's all thirty-eight of them and packages. Then we have, we're gonna have a family room, so that, you know, if, when I'm there, my kids can come up and they can drag me into the family room and I can look at them while they open their presents. So, it's a, it's actually a new and kind of a unique opportunity for elderly. And so these guys think that's a good idea, have a little kitchen in it, and have a family type setting. And then, we talked about those offices for the home healthcare agency, and they sort of surround that, and they're part of it. And so that's what happens here. Then when you come through, you'll come through and into the main corridor, this is the, sort of the connecting corridor, the existing connecting corridor across the classroom, and you'll come down one wing, and you'll come through here to get down to the other wing. The corridors were breaking up a little bit, trying to provide some natural light in there, try to do some nice things for opportunities to sit at tables, card tables, and so on and so forth. And then each of the classrooms, it's kind of complicated how we did it, but each of the classrooms, it's like, you, you take two classrooms and you get three units out of it. The classrooms are deep and they're big, deeper than normal. So there's, there's two types of, there's two types of unit, one's a full one-bedroom and one's kind of a modified one-bedroom. Each unit has living, kitchen, dining, bedroom, and direct access to the outside, which is very unique. There'll be a little sitting area outside. That happens on both sides. And then we have a couple of different units that are, they're different because they're, because in the location of the building, they have to be different. So there's, and they're actually left and right, so there's two units standing, two units here. And then there are these at where the ADA units are, which is where the principal used to be, I presume, which you probably all know about. So, and then what we're gonna do is provide access out here, and there's gonna be a little courtyard space, a little outdoor courtyard space. If I can show you on, if I can show you on. If I can show you on, I can show you on, yeah. Site plan right here, it's, we don't really have it designed yet, but it would come out here and there'd be a little sitting area and a little locking pad. Then, uh, this is where the gym is, there'll be three more units in there, the gym and mechanical room. We're gonna, uh, create three more units right there. And those three actually don't have direct, direct access to the outside. Uh, so that's that, and my last one is basically, uh, the picture. And so there's the, there's the kitchen area, existing kitchen area, so there's the port cochere. And then what we're trying to do is to take the school parents away from the school and create more of a residential, smaller scale, comfortable for the elderly.
It's a village, it's nice.
Village. So it's just a series of, actually just, some of these smaller things are actually doing something, the other ones are sort of just.
Just decorative.
Yeah, sort of decorative, yeah.
Built for snow load.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned mechanical room, how are you gonna heat all these units?
Electric.
Oh, okay. Didn't think of that.
There's, this building's gonna be super insulated. And we've taken a long look at, um, the appropriate system. And, um, so we're, you know, we came away, we've, you know, we're, it's just a one-story building, we've got so much insulation in the attic, we can get so much in there, and the exterior, you know, in the units, and if you look at a whole unit, three of the, you know, more than three-quarters of it is a budding space. So the only, the only, per unit, the only thing is really, you know, twelve, twelve to twenty, lineal feet of exterior wall space, and we're fanning that out, and we've got it up to a R thirty-seven in the wall and a R sixty in the roof. And we had studies done, we looked at, we looked at a boiler system, and, um, you know, I, I, I think that the, we felt that the electric is environmentally hard to believe, you wouldn't have said this twenty years ago, but is the, sort of the more appropriate way to go if you can afford to do it, and we've done the studies, and that's where we're at. It's a big service that we're putting in, but.
Yeah, it probably is. Uh, what about, I, I, this may be a silly question, but I remember last summer, first time in twenty-five years, I had to buy an air conditioner. Um, how about cooling? You think it's just the thickness of the ceiling, insulation will keep it cool?
Right, so we looked at sort of a central air thing, and, you know, we're just, it's very, we, we looked at heat pumps, we, we've been, we looked at everything. And I did a project in, down in Brewer, and, uh, we core, it was a brick building, and we, each unit, we cored a seven-inch hole through the brick. And we put a plug in it in the winter time, and in the summertime, you take it out, and you can hook up a little, one of those little portable plug-in air conditioners. And, uh, you, it's great, the tenants love it because they can move it around, so if they're playing cards, and it's very inexpensive. You know, it's the difference between the plug, the, the owner, I mean, the tenant pays for the air conditioning unit, uh, and the plug was twenty bucks, and the air conditioning system was seventy-eight thousand.
I do.
So I think it's, you know, I think it's appropriate.
I think it's pretty clever, actually.
So, so by way of what we've, we've done in town, uh, there's, there's a standing committee, basically regarding safety, and we, and when we did the initial review of this project, we cited, um, emergency access around the perimeter of the building, and also some what appeared to be pinch points on the small plans, uh, regarding the inner corridors and so forth, for ADA, ADA compliance. Uh, the architects got a, done a great job in addressing those concerns, so, uh, as far as, as staff, we've been through it and we're, we're satisfied.
So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, what are you proposing for exterior lighting? On the, on the building, or?
Um, we, I said before that what we're gonna do, we're gonna have parking lot lighting, uh, poles with low cutoff lighting here, here, here. Uh, lighting underneath the port cochere.
Yep.
Another pole light over here, and then each of the units has their own, there's a little portico outside of each unit, and there'll be recessed lights underneath.
Okay.
So your light posts out in the perimeter, are they down-facing and, and?
Yep.
Dark sky rated?
Yep, they're twelve, they're twelve footers, and they're, you know, we have the photometrics that show it's, takes care of the night sky.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Are we ready to go through the checklist, is that part of the agenda?
I think that that would be a great idea, yeah.
I do too. Oh, have a seat, please. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, on page thirty of your packet, begins a site design review checklist, which is a planning board we have to consider. Uh, we can decide that it meets requirements, or it does not, or it's not applicable. But we need to go down through it. It's tedious, but it's necessary. Starting with item A, compliance with comprehensive plan.
I see no reasons why it wouldn't.
On these, I don't propose a vote on each one, I'm, I'm looking for consensus.
Yes.
Traffic considerations.
I think those have been addressed as well.
Yes. And it, that marries with site access.
Yep.
Parking and vehicle circulation requirements.
Yes.
Pedestrian circulation.
Yes.
The next one's easy, since it's an established site, the site conditions, I agree that's a yes. Open space requirements, or adequate open space, I should say. Some of these are really easy because it is an existing site.
That's what I was, I mean, I think you need to go through them all line by line anyway, but the majority of these, I think, are already where, like, as you said.
Sanitary sewage is accounted for, if anybody says I'm going too fast, go ahead.
Just on the sewage, the copy of the application provided to the sewer authority for review and comment, so that. Are we just getting, we're just getting this, or has that been done?
I can't answer that.
Yeah.
The sewer aspect's already been approved, right? With care of utilities? Is that where, is that where you're going?
Yeah, I guess it just says a copy of this application is provided to the sewer authority for review and comment, so.
It's an existing though.
Right, it's an existing site. With an existing sewer.
But they're making new changes to.
Yeah, they're reducing the population.
The fact that the building is existing.
But.
Hugh has been up there.
Yeah.
And, um, we have a plumbing permit.
You, yeah. So I, I'm just going by what it says here, the, in the ordinance, you know.
In mind as a board, we have some, we have some flexibility.
Yeah.
And, and this, this being an existing site kind of changes how we view some of these things, in my view. If this was a greenfield site.
But they're making a lot of changes to.
If this was a greenfield site, we'd say, oh yeah, you better show us the sewer point, but. Sewer exists, I don't, I don't see where we wanna spend a lot of time.
I think the only thing they're changing though, Christine, is maybe they're adding some outlets, but like you said, they're going from a five-inch. That was, that was, you said that's engineered, correct?
Right, I'm just making sure that this sewer app, you know, has seen this application and, I don't know.
You've gotta be, you've gotta sign off on it anyway, because they draw a permit, correct?
Right. Yeah, I can certainly share this with Hugh after the fact as well, and.
Okay. Water supply, obviously. Emergency vehicle access, any comments there? You're, you're the man there, waste disposal, that'll be depending on what dumpster they put in.
Correct.
Is there a place for that with the?
Yes, it's up to the west side, it's, it's the opposite entrance from the main, the old main and school entrance.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's screened, pretty well screened from the public there. The buffering is, as exists on the site.
It's natural.
And there are natural areas around the border. Exterior lighting, we've talked about. And I didn't hear any objections.
Nope.
Stormwater management, we've discussed.
Yep.
Provision for it, it doesn't go into the sewer. Erosion and sediment control is.
Already existing.
Existing. Not sure what it means by buildings, but the building is the building. Existing landscape is okay, infrastructure, if that infrastructure has to do with utilities and fire department access and all that stuff, and parking, I don't see where we need to spend any time on that, but catch me if you, if you think you have an issue, this is the time to do it. All right. Advertising features?
Not gonna be any sign into anything like that.
Oh, there'd be one sign, just for the.
Yeah.
Just at the entrance, yeah. Design relationship to the site and surrounding properties is, it is what it is, again.
It's existing.
Scenic vistas and areas.
I think that's not applicable.
Not applicable.
Utilities, we've already discussed.
Yep. Mineral exploration is not applicable. General requirements, yes, phosphorus export.
Probably not applicable there either.
Do you have an original for us to sign?
Yes, I do. But first, I'm gonna have all the partners sign.
That would be good.
That was one of my comments.
Hmm?
That's, that was one of my comments, they hadn't signed the application.
You're sharper than I am, I didn't pick that up. This has been in your works for quite some time, too. All right. Members of the board, we need motion and a vote.
A move that we approve, the application is written.
I'll second it.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, unanimous? Good. Now, the building permit is.
So.
Your purview, is it not so?
The history of the building permit is, is we actually got the cart before the horse on this project, and we went with the building permit before we went with the site design review.
So now that we're caught up, I think this is old business, and as a matter of fact, I think that we approved it considering that we passed a site design review.
Correct.
And so I have that paperwork here as well.
That doesn't need our signature though, does it? I just need yours?
No, I needed your permission to sign on your, on your behalf.
You got it. To my left, wind up at Phil. Phil, three and a half. Oh, congratulations, members of the board.
And Ken, do you have, uh, do you have the approved demolition permit on file somewhere?
Yes, and it's in the packet, yeah.
It's not been approved or signed or anything?
It was signed by me, or, or Tony Michelle.
Actually, yeah, no, it's not signed.
Signed by Carl.
Yep. That's not signed on the back end.
The copy that we received has not, does not show a city.
That was my mistake then, I'll sign off on that.
So we're doing an existing signed document, or, or not?
It'll be in one second.
Oh, okay, all right, I get it then. So it hasn't been signed.
I've got the original here, and, uh, it will be signed, yes.
And when will demolition begin?
Demolition is actually almost complete.
Will under.
Whoops.
Uh, the asbestos abatement started first, and as they ended, ended the asbestos abatement, really, they, they were well into the demolition point at that part, but they had, they had received our, our blessing and, and with the exception, I didn't sign it, so.
Anything further on Caribou Senior Living LLC? Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, continued good work.
Congratulations, great project.
We won't drag you back up here again.
I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to see you doing you.
I can't, I can't wait to see you.
Hopefully, we'd like to invite you guys out.
Yeah.
I'll get you, I'll get you copies of all, I'll get you copies of all the signed applications and everything.
Eric, you want to?
You want?
Does his last point anymore mean he, you want?
No.
Really throwing him the towel.
No.
And there is another half the story, which is that I have someone in my office who was, was on the Portland Planning Board for six years. And so she said, I'm never gonna present. But for this board, I'll come back.
Perfect, thank you.
Do, do you need, do you need the blueprints on, on that as well?
No, this was just.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, boss, uh, items E and F, Duncan's not ready, so we're gonna suspend those.
Right, the, um, the short story there is, is that we received all the updated information late in the day today, no one's had time to review it. Um, to my knowledge, they have not yet received approval from Department of Transportation regarding their, their transportation plan. So you wish to table that?
Yes, there's no parking.
Yeah, it's been tabled, Kelly, ask anything, please, um.
So we have these to review for, for next time.
Yeah, don't reproduce those, yeah.
Well, there might be a change to it, too.
If there are changes, yeah.
Can you, um, can you give me an update on the deed or the purchase and sale agreement for the Duncan property?
There's a PSA in the packet.
Yeah, on the upper left-hand stack of paper, right there, it's in that packet. So we're, we're, we're checking off the boxes, but we're still a couple of boxes short.
Because they're budding on Bennett Drive, and because main DOT is, we're building parts of that road that accommodate the school. Uh, if they don't get approval from the main DOT for their entrance plan.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
That, that being latest plan that Ken's.
There's still some, there's still some small details that they're working on.
On the Department of Transportation side, they will have, they will have to extend a third lane all the way to Direct Center.
To North Street.
North Street.
And that's what they show, I mean, I, I looked at the drawing real quick, and it shows that they push that turning lane up. But I also believe that they are gonna be adding another means of entrance to the school at about that intersection as well.
Yeah, but, you know, Duncan's made some changes, they got rid of that fast lane pickup thing.
Yeah, which was gonna, never gonna fly anyway.
Intention of traffic, so.
And they've changed the angle parking, they changed the angle of the parking, which is very smart, yeah. So they're making some progress.
Those were concessions to M.D.O., yeah. And, and they're, I mean, they're working at it, they're, we'll get there, but not tonight.
It'll happen. All right, you say you have some new communications for us?
Um, we have some interesting new communications. We, we've had, uh, an interest in a, a proposed medical marijuana caregiver activity. Um, and this, this young fellow actually addressed the, the council this, this past Monday. And, um, as a result of, of council action taken that evening, there's no issue with him conducting his activity, and currently, nothing in our code that says that we can regulate much of what he does. So the other, the other proposed medical marijuana caregiver activity proposal would have been an edibles, so a bakery, but I haven't heard from that interest in a while.
Okay, so we don't know if City Council is all good with that?
There's no action that we need to take on that. There's no action that we need to take on that.
Not ready, that's what I'll put down.
They don't have to acquire a permit?
Is it something we should start working on though, in the, before?
Yeah.
It's coming, okay.
In my staff report, if I may.
Report, staff.
As, as we started to, to do our final review with Denise and I on the chapter thirteen, we realized that the, um, the shoreline zoning is dated. There were, there were attempts to make revisions to that document and I think reintroduced the state model into it, which, um, notably, we can't do because this, this, we have to seek approval from Department of Environmental Protection in order to, to have an official shoreline zoning ordinance and map. But it also introduced a whole bunch of kind of nonsensical language back into the ordinance that was removed. That being title marshes, um, uh, commercial fisheries and maritime activities. All those coastal things that really don't apply to us that were removed, they were put back in. So, um, as we move forward, we'll make arrangements to, to start in the process, it is a process to revise our shoreline zoning and update it. It's time to update it anyway, so. It's timely and it's a good thing to put in our comprehensive plan update as a goal.
Yep, that's a good idea.
So that, that would be the next thing. We've already started work on our comprehensive plan update in that I, I found out that NMDC actually has funding to help us with our transportation and demographic sessions. And so I engaged them to do just that. So we're off and running. I guess I, I need to know if, if, um, the planning board would like to have a committee to participate in, in the comprehensive plan or if you want to tackle it as a whole board?
You mean the update?
Yep.
Did we do a committee last time, if I remember correctly? Or was it just workshops with?
There was a, there was a citywide set of workshops.
Right.
And there will be again.
Which were conducted outside of our purview.
Right.
We took their input.
Right.
And, and that's going to happen again. Those were good sessions.
Yeah.
Bring Kathy back to facilitate those?
That would be nice, wouldn't it? Someone to bring some energy to the proceedings. Yes, but that's expected by the state that, that we have that kind of public input.
Okay, so this, this process will, this update process will take about a quarter of a year?
It's a year-long process. I made a Gantt chart as requested. It's on eleven by seventeen paper and it's three pages long, so there's, there's a lot of little details. That's a lot of Gantt's. However, there are some sections that we, we probably won't need to address. And maybe that's what a committee could handle. One of those things that we don't need to update, some things don't change. So, um, the size of our township likely never changed. So some eighty, eighty square miles of land. Also, in the pipelines, we'll, we'll be working on a, a new, um, ordinance for medical marijuana caregivers. And, uh, basically what that will entail is, is that the, the state statute allows for home rule. And that was one of the new additives that, that took place in December, on December thirteenth. And so part of that home, home rule clause was that the city council could choose to opt in or, or basically say that, yes, we're going to allow, um, retail medical marijuana stores, storefronts, manufacturing facilities, um, testing facilities and large-scale cultivation facilities. Um, the city chose not to act. They, they chose not to extend the moratorium. And so they chose not to act, which leaves us in a default position. So that, that, that means there'll be a prohibition against retail, retail storefronts, manufacturing facilities.
By not acting is forbidden.
However, that being said, um, the dispensary is, is grandfathered in. And also that the medical marijuana, the registered medical marijuana caregivers are within their rights to do their activities in our town. No permit, no...
Pretty much what the city council decided to do is status quo.
Yeah.
What we have is what we have.
And ban any further development?
Yeah, it sounds like. I don't have a problem.
So, so the downside is we don't really get to see where these activities take place. We don't inspect their facilities. They don't pay a permitting fee. They're out around the community and we, we, we just flat out don't know where they are. We can't ask. If, if a name comes forward and, and someone says, well, they're doing these things, I can actually call, the code enforcement officer can actually call the Department of Health and Human Services and ask. And they will say yes or no.
That's fair.
That's about all the regulation that we have.
It's more than what we could before, right?
Yeah.
So if it turns out they're not, then the recourse is...
It's all civil.
It's all civil, yeah.
Well, no, it could be policing action at that point if they're conducting that kind of retail activity.
Oh yeah, if it's retail, then yeah, but...
So they, they will need to, to seek, uh, the medical marijuana caregivers will have to seek their, uh, registration from the state. And the state will get their fee for that.
We get nothing.
We get nothing. But the, we'll, we'll write the ordinance that understands the state statute and what those regulations are. And also that the, you know, the right to home rule and the actions that were taken. So, and that, that's part of our living document homework that we'll do.
What would be the purpose of the ordinance?
The ordinance would have been if they opted in, if, if the council decided we should opt in.
Which they didn't.
We would have the chance to regulate these activities, where they'd be located.
Sure.
Uh, permitting costs, um...
But the council did not choose to opt in?
They didn't, they didn't choose to act.
So why do we need to do an ordinance?
We need to understand exactly what rights that the, uh, medical marijuana caregivers have and that, that's loaded by state statute, so that's not hard. And we need to recognize that action the council did do, which was nothing in this case, but, and that's part of the statute as well, so we'll recognize that. We'll put it together right under our prohibition against retail sales.
Excuse me. I don't know who that is. Get out of there. RoboCop.
And that's all I had for updates.
Okay.
Unless you want to hear about neighbor hate?
No. You have more stories about that?
Well, no, it's, actually, we've had a couple of days of sunshine now. The snowbank's going down a little bit. So I had a fellow call today and, and this is ongoing. And he, he's upset because his neighbor is a hobbyist and ta, and, and fixes cars and trucks. So he built himself a big garage and, um, basically is well-known with his neighbors or all the big farmers in his neighborhood, bring their pickups to be serviced, so at any one time, there might be six or eight cars in the driveway and they think it looks like a junkyard. So I think that every once in a while, the snowbanks go down and they can see again, it's like, oh, and so they give me another call and I'll say, I'll call him again. Basically, these vehicles are registered, so it's not like having a bunch of unregistered vehicles junk sitting around. He does have parts sitting out on his back tree line that I've talked to him before. Uh, the remedy, remedy to this would not satisfy his neighbor, but it would be a use permit and allow him to do garage work. But he didn't want to spend ninety dollars. So, I'll give him another call, we'll have another conversation.
Yeah, we probably should try to get him to do that.
So, and there's chickens and goats and stuff like that, but it's life as usual.
But they're well fed?
No, not really. That's part of the problem. And there's a couple missing now, too, that's part of the problem. And there's chickens in the road and that's part of the problem, so...
You didn't know what you was getting into, boy.
Yeah, I did. I came in and I didn't want it. I said, no, I'm still here. So that's all I had for you this evening. We, we didn't have any kind of training or anything like that unless you have some goals to discuss.
I have a question for you, Ken.
Sure.
And this came from a discussion I had with a real estate agent back a couple of weeks ago. On page one sixty-one of chapter thirteen, I imply D is in Delta. Can you explain what that means?
Prior to the sale of any lot, the applicant shall provide the CEO with a letter from the main licensed professional surveyor stating that all artificial monumentation shown on the plan has been installed.
This is in the general administrative section of this, this plan, the ordinance?
I've never experienced that.
What does it mean?
It basically means that, that, that we expect...
Subdivision development?
No.
No?
They expect these properties to be surveyed on sale.
The city of Caribou?
The writers of this document. I, I wasn't here at the time.
I.e. us then.
So, but you do see that with banks a lot now. So when people are buying property now, they want to survey. They, they want to make sure that they know what they're, they're financing.
Their investment is...
Right. Your lot line is this pin to this pin, you couldn't, you can't get a back loan?
And it, it might also relate to the assessor's work, who also want to know what, what the value of that land is. So it could be measured.
So is that one of those things that are...
That's what I think, that's what I think. I don't know what the...
In the ordinance and it's never really, um, followed?
It would probably be followed again at the assessor level, uh, when we update tax maps and so forth like that, when we do, when we do property splits. We, you know, you get surveyors, we get, we, we get...
As soon as it's shown on the plan. I, I still think this, this, this refers back to subdivision development where there is a plan. If, if the engineer shows monumentation on the plan, then they're going to provide a letter to the CEO saying that monumentation as shown on the plan is there.
And again, I, I've, I've never experienced that, so I've only been here a year.
Twenty words.
Well, I know it's too late, but I probably should take that out. Or put it back, or put it where it belongs, if it's in the, and it does make sense in a subdivision, subdivision plan, it kind of makes sense.
A lot of these things seem...
Make, make a note, we'll come back.
So I challenged a real estate agent, I said, did, did you know that every transaction that has to be surveyed?
Well, no, this is when there's an application for a land use permit.
Yeah, but it's under, it's under the...
It's only if there's an application coming in for something. You know, I want to do this.
It's not a general rule, it applies to the transfer of every lot.
If, if we're reviewing it or Ken is reviewing it, then that need, those things need to be done. Like say the Dunkin' Donuts, uh, application, they've given us prior to the sale, the applicant should provide the code enforcement officer with a letter from the professional stating that the monumentation that is on a survey or in the purchase and sale has been installed.
So, so also... That's going to be linked to some kind of a plan and so private, private transactions don't count.
Right, and also is, is part of this whole section. It, it, it should probably be CEO or agent because our building inspectors do a lot of this kind of work. So we, I can see we can revise that whole section.
What Sonya came here today to do or if somebody's applying to do something in one of the zones, I think.
Okay, that, that answers the question, thank you.
They usually provide that anyway, yeah.
There's probably, as long as we spent on this document, there's probably still some stuff in there that, you think? Oh my God knows, we should have caught the first.
Well, I only bring it up because I, I made an assertion to a real estate agent.
Well, you'll have to go buy that, there's a cup of coffee.
And she said, she said, I've never heard of that. And I said, no, I read it in the plan. Um, I said, I read it somewhere. And she said, and she, and she said, well, it may have to do with subdivisions.
Yeah.
And I said, okay, that makes sense, I'll go check it out.
Okay, then the next meeting is the second Thursday of April. Which exact date I'm not sure of, but probably something like... And I'm not smart enough to take out my phone and look. Shows you how much I handle it.
The second is the eleventh.
It's already on the calendar.
Oh, it's right there, right there.
Ken, can you, with regards to like our goals, can you give us some documentation, what other similar cities are doing with regards to home occupations?
By control, sure. I can reach out to George Howe or Antonio Lebat, see how they're handling that, sure.
There's some stuff on the application that, I mean, it was sort of, it doesn't leave a lot of sense why it's on there and there's, and there's stuff that's not filled out either. Just that would have answered one of, one of Dan's questions this morning this afternoon. Like under the general information, it says, uh, total square footage of the residence and then total square footage of the residence to be developed. Had that been filled in, you know, that would have eliminated that particular question. The other part that's on there is that, um, indicate any restrictive covenants on currently in the deed. I don't think that that's a bad thing to have on there.
We've already seen that that can get dusty.
That way it's known, you know, because, you know, Joe Blow who lives, you know, three or four houses down from this person who may not really care, may say that, well, what does that mean? That's going to pose that question, but that gives, I mean, that, we're providing that a donation to the abutting property owners, that, yeah, you know, there is a covenant for that particular property, you know, and that'll help them if they choose to exercise those rights to, to address it in civil court. I, I don't think that that should not be on there, but I think that that, that part should be filled out as well.
Yeah, I'll send a note out to the, to the lister and see if I get some, some bites.
Anything else anyone wants to discuss? Well then, the meeting is adjourned. One minute seven.